Good morning. Welcome, and all of you folks, to the Pennington County Planning Commission, June 24th, 2024. Recommendations to Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on July 2nd, 2024, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the commission chambers in the back. Roll call. Jim's gonna be here, yet he did email. So, just put him in when he gets here. Right now, then, he's the only one short. Approval of the June 10th, 2024 minutes. Have you all had a chance to review your agenda packets? If so, the Chair would address a motion to approve the June 10th, 2024 minutes.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second to approve the June 10th, 2024 minutes. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Agenda is the second item on them. Same thing. If you've had it good, move to approve the agenda as submitted in our packet for today's meeting. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. Good morning, Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item being removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number four is conditional use permit review, CUR 9614, from Mark Hirsch, to review a caretaker's residence in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends to end conditional use permit review, CUR 9614, with the property owner's concurrence. Item number five is conditional use permit review, CUR 0446, A&amp;B Ranch, Inc., Brian Barber, to review a metal fabrication business in an agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, CUR 0446, with conditions. Item number six is conditional use permit review, CUR 1605, for Spring Creek Hideaway, LLC, Brenton Palm Verink, to review a vacation home rental in an agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, CUR 1605, with conditions. Item number seven is conditional use permit review, CUR 1915, for Samuel G. Fullerton III, to review a caretaker's residence in an agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, CUR 1915, with conditions. Item number eight is conditional use permit review, CUR 2156, for Alex and Holly Neiman, A&amp;H Enterprises, Inc., to review the rental of 36 UTVs with six backups and six slingshots to include a washing area, parking area, and 36 to 40 employees in Highway Service District. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, CUR 2156, with conditions. Item number nine is conditional use permit review, CUR 22-01, for Eric and Stephanie Thompson, to review a vacation home rental in Aurora Residential District. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, CUR 22-01, with conditions. Item 10 is conditional use permit review, CUR 2251, for Suzette Wasvik, to review an efficiency dwelling unit in an agriculture district. And staff recommends to continue conditional use permit review, CUR 2251, as not all of the conditions have been made. Item number 11 is conditional use permit review, CUR 23-17, for David Allard, to review a bed and breakfast in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, CUR 2317, with conditions. Item number 12 is conditional use permit review, CUR 2320, for David and Angela Rowland, to review a bed and breakfast in Aurora Residential District. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, CUR 2320, with conditions. And item 13 is mining permit review, MP 14-02, for the Pennington County Highway Department, to review excavation and extraction of gravel in an agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of mining permit review, MP 14-02, with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Next item is, would the staff desire any item pulled?
No, not at this time.
Would the commission, anyone on the commission like any item pulled?
One want pulled, but I would like to make a comment. I don't know if that's now or later or what.
Not sure. Does it involve a specific item?
Yes.
Then you really have to pull it to make the comment.
Okay, well, I'll pull it. It's not a big deal, but I've got to.
Which number?
Seven.
Number seven.
Mr. Chair, I'd ask that you pull eight, 10, and 11.
Eight?
10.
11. Very good. Anyone in the audience would like to have an item pulled? Chair, address, no, excuse me, we've got clerical, anybody has a clerical error in any of those they want to announce? Okay. Chair needs a motion to address the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent agenda excluding items eight, seven, eight, 10, and 11.
Second.
Did we have 10 in there too, did you say?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Seven, eight, 10, and 11.
Very good. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as submitted with items number seven, eight, 10, and 11 removed. Discussion. From the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number seven.
Good morning. This is no big deal. There's no pictures, there's no satellite, there's no nothing. We're supposed to do an intelligent recommendation and, you know, it would be nice to at least have some idea of what these look like. Last time we had one of these and we had the trailer house and the house and all that, gave us an idea of what was going on. It's, like you say, no big deal, but it would help in the future. So, that's all I've got.
Anything else? For T.J.?
I make a motion that we approve conditional use permit, CUR 19-15.
Second.
Moved and second to approve per staff's recommendation, CUR 19-15, with six conditions. Discussion. From the commission, from the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number eight. Are you gonna stand in for Jason then, Brittany?
Yeah, he's not.
When I've read this staff report, Brittany, did somebody actually inspect this?
Yes, Jason went out, it looks like, on June 17th. And he counted 46 rental vehicles. He said no vehicles were parked in the grass. Per the applicant's agent, the wash pit was currently cleaned out and the waste was being disposed of at a location in Custer County.
So, at the last meeting, the reason I pulled number eight is if you go to recommendation number five, at all, UTVs and slingshots continue to be parked on paved or gravel surfaces. And I would suggest that if we have something similar to this, and I think we will in the future, it's just across the street, but all the units are parked on the grass, then I think they should be follow the same guidelines that this particular business should. So, that's the reason I pulled number eight, and I just wanted to make sure that there was an inspection to ensure that all these were parked on pavement or gravel.
Yes, I do know Jason went out there last week, so.
So, that's all I had on number eight, Mr. Chair.
All right. I have a comment, don't go away.
Okay.
I did inspect it this morning. And the truth is, they actually are over by two, but they have eight slingshots instead of the other, there's six backups, they have two four doors and they have four two doors. However, to support Mr. Roskam, thoughts on that? There are actually, some of them are parked in the rear, three of them are parked up in the grass. And they've been there. But why I brought this up and why I stopped was, the truth is, it's, we usually have a lot more vehicles here than that. And Mike goes by it regularly, I go by it regularly, we're talking at least 10 more vehicles. And what my recommendation would be, Jason get with the owner and just for the sanctity of the process, we add up the numbers to be exact to what they have. And they do, I think they lower them a little bit when it's coming up for review, I'm not sure, because they were right on the money today, other than two extra slingshots, I couldn't believe it wasn't accounted. And Mike's the same opinion, we go by there and there's been at least 10 more vehicles, maybe even more, maybe 15.
It's packed, yeah.
And they are on, but they usually park them on gravel, it's just that they cut down on the available other spots. So, if we, if I was to make any recommendation before we pass this, it would be that in the future ones, get together and get the numbers better fit for the operator. They're operating excellently, it looks like, from me, from driving by, and I drive by it almost every day. The other one, well, whatever, and there's other ones, there's one in town that's a little questionable too. But we don't regulate that one. All right. So, motion?
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve conditional use permit review, CUR 21-56.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second to approve, CUR 21-56, with 21 conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 10.
Okay, item number 10. Good morning, Megan. When you go to this particular efficiency unit, how long does it take you to get there once you turn off of Sheridan Lake Road?
I'm not the one who did the staff visit on this. That would have been David who did it. He does say that it takes quite a while to get up there. From the road turnoff, I'm not exactly sure, but it's a good hour or so to get up there.
It's way in the heck out there. But my question is, the efficiency dwelling currently has a residential appearance, and I just wanna make sure I understand what you mean by residential appearance. If I recall, that was like a park model.
Yep.
Came in on tires, and then I assume that for lending purposes or whatever, she had to make sure that that thing was secured to the site, probably putting concrete down with some type of a metal device, holding the unit down to that concrete casey on or whatever.
So, I didn't include the photos, but there's skirting around the trailer that it was I'm not sure how exactly it's permanently attached to the ground, but since that skirting is there, it's more of an assumption.
But she's met all the requirements, other than trying to navigate through this address thing?
Exactly. So, she has an address on kind of her deck, but she doesn't have an address where the, where her address meets the road coming in. And then, another question is, so, condition number six, like I said in the analysis, it can't be fulfilled because of conflicting information with the roads or with the Forest Service. I'm not sure how she's going to work with them to post a sign somewhere indicating her address along that way there.
But that's something that we can probably navigate through, just have to.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, just need to work with her on that.
That was my only question on number 10, Mr. Chair. So, with that being said, I will make a motion that we approve conditional use permit review, CUR 22-51.
Second.
Moved and second to approve per staff's recommendation, CUR 22-51, which is to continue.
Continue.
Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 11.
And item number 11, until I read this report, I thought that was complete and in operation. So, in the report, it says that the interior's not complete?
That's correct. Jason went out there on the 18th and did a site inspection, the exterior is complete, the interior is not. So, he'll have to pull the building permit when he starts that process, but he's working towards it. It's just taken a little bit longer. But even with the conditional use permit, because he has started work and he's actively working on it, it's still.
And one of the conditions would be not to have a range or oven in there?
Yeah.
So, until that's, so until that is not complete, I assume that we're gonna do a thorough investigation, once the interior's done, just to ensure that there is no range and oven.
Correct. And Mr. Allard has been very cooperative and been working with Jason very actively on this. So, they have been in communication and been working on this, so I don't, I think once the interior is done with the building permit, it still has to be inspected per building inspections anyway, so we will know that as part of the building permit.
And then they're still working on a wastewater treatment.
Correct.
Because if I recall, that thing's on a cliff over Rapid Creek.
Right. And it's probably going to need total containment, meaning a holding tank or something like that, or some alternative type of system.
So, my last question would be, when do we expect this to be totally complete?
Um, when Jason had met with them, he was working on it. He, let me see, what did he put down for the, he actually put it to re-reviewed in a year, so he gave him up to a year for the next review.
That's all I had.
One other thing I wanted to point out was, when we did approve this sometime back, if my memory strikes me, his actually, his biggest challenge is getting an access that's gonna be usable and make everybody happy to. His access is the difficulty, there's space and whatnot, but it's gonna have to be done right.
Mm-hmm.
So, that he doesn't, what, run into conflict with his other property owners on top?
Right. I think he's going through his existing property.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That's, at that time, that was going to be quite a challenge for him, to finish this or complete it.
When this first came in front of us, there was a lot of neighbors concerned, but I see now that there's been no complaints filed, so.
Yeah.
I'm good with it, I just wanted, had a couple questions, so. That being said, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve conditional use permit, CUR 23-17.
Second.
With conditions.
Moved and second to approve, CUR 23-17, per staff's recommendation, with 19 conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item, let's see, it's 13, isn't it?
I believe it's 14.
14? Yes, you're right, I put my marker back in, the 13.
Megan Talmadge, Planner. Agenda item number 14 is conditional use permit, COCU 24-0019, and is to allow a home occupation, we're working on subject property. The applicant and owner is Mervyn Hilty. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit, COCU 24-0019, and correction, this would be to the July 8th meeting, to allow him to send the letters required for. The 8th, yes. To allow him to send the letters required for advertising, as he did not send them in time previously.
All right, questions for Megan?
Move to approve.
Chair, address a motion.
Move to approve per staff's recommendations.
Second.
Moved and second to approve per staff's recommendation, COCU 24-0019, and you're switching that to the July 8th, not the 22nd?
That's correct.
All right, July 8th meeting. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On to item number 14. Oh, supposed? On to item number 14, almost, had Karen catch up with me there?
15.
15.
Item 15.
15, yes. Once I'm off, I'm off. Thanks.
So, item number 15 is ordinance amendment OA 24-09, for Pennington County, to amend section 904(c) dead-end road system of the existing section 904(c) dead-end road system of the Pennington County subdivision regulations. This was brought in front of us during our planning session with the Board of Commissioners. There was a request to look at some alternative language and some mitigation measures in instances where there are dead-end road systems, when they request variances. So, staff did, this is our, kind of our first proposal at that, where if they are in a fire protection district, that they are required a mitigation plan in addition to other measures, flood hazard areas, that basically, it's just saying the system cannot provide access to more than 40 lots. And in all cases, it would read the same as it reads now, with not exceed 40 lots or two miles in cumulative length. And then there was one exception added, that this section does not apply to subdivisions that result in no net gain in lot density. Just with some of the variances that had come forward in front of the Board of Commissioners, that seemed to be a deciding factor of granting the variances, that it was actually reducing the density and not increasing the density. So, we added that as an exception. One of the other things, as far as a mitigation plan in fire protection areas, is that state statute does not allow by ordinance to put fire sprinkler systems in a home. State statute does not allow us to put that in our ordinance. So, if they want to do that, if that's part of their mitigation plan, they can. There's other measures that they can do and work with, South Dakota Wildland Fire, to do clearing and things. So, those are some of the things that staff came up with as part of this.
Questions for Brittany?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Brittany, with that being said, did this kind of come into play with the property off of Sheridan Lake Road that Jeff Mars owns? And you sent me an email?
Yes, so that one was the one that, the two miles of cumulative length, that one only was like 1.87 miles, so that's why it didn't, they had to go in and have it surveyed all of the mileage, and it was under the two miles, so that's.
So, what roads were involved with that survey?
It was the ones that came down from Sheridan Lake Road and any of the cul-de-sacs that went through to the dead-end road system where it connects to them.
So, that would have been more than two miles and that would have not gone through?
Correct.
Okay. And the 48, the 40 lots, I'm still trying to wrestle with that, because why can't it be 60? 40 lots would be, you're assuming, a lot of assumptions, but, you know, if they, for an example, 40 lots and they had a fire station down there, that would make a difference in my opinion. So, I just wondered, is there any talk in the future that we need to expand that? Because I'm afraid that this commission or the next commission, there're gonna be folks coming in the front wanting to develop their lots down there, and you're gonna exceed 40 lots, and how do we navigate through that?
They'd still would have to go through some of the variance processes, or they could do a mitigation plan.
Okay.
If, so that kind of gives them somewhat of an out, or at least it gives them a requirement for their variance, so it can be stipulated. The 40 lots, I know that I have talked to fire protection people from City of Rapid City, kind of where that 40 lots came from, and that was something that came from that group a long time ago, and I think it has to do with response and evacuation and things like that, where they're comfortable.
Brittany, I can help you on that. And you're correct, we looked into it a number of years ago, but it's also involved in road design standards, because there's a certain number of lots or people before you get to some other standards about turnarounds and capability. And it's increased over the years because of the size of the emergency equipment. Used to be an ambulance looked like a van, you know, look what they look like now, some of them are darn near tandem trucks, they're full-size rigs. And to turn these things around becomes a very scary thing for them, and if it was a fire, it's even scarier yet, they've gotta move quickly. And the road standards are also involved in this run. One of the things I wanted to throw in was, I thought on our flood hazard areas, we also were requiring, we've done it in most of the CUPs, to have some type of emergency egress, yeah, plan.
Right. And if they don't have one, then they would not be able to, the way that this reads, and that's the way that they have it now.
Yeah.
When you look at some of the ones that are significant, where you have to cross six or seven bridges.
Right.
You know, one washes out, there's no way to get through. And in some of those areas, the topography is such that there is not a way to actually get out. And in those areas, there has been loss of life in those areas previously from the 72 flight.
Well, some of them have act, only have their egress through public land too, they've, some of them made deals along the way, or we've run into them where they can get out across Black Hills National Forest Land.
And those are things that are considered during the variance process, when they apply for the variance, that the board can consider as a measure to stipulate, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
And isn't there some consideration in some of the subdivisions about residential fire sprinklers too? I know in town that they do some of that.
Right. So, the state statute doesn't allow us to require that by ordinance. If it's part of their mitigation plan, it would have to be part of their mitigation plan. So, a mitigation plan is pretty broad, but the one that we reference here that goes into section 1400, we work with Jerome and we work with Chip, who's with the City of Rapid City, when they review those mitigation plans and make recommendations, so it's, they're, they're reviewed, so that they look at it from their perspective as well. And sometimes, if that's the choice of the homeowner, to put those in, that's considered in the mitigation plan.
Does a fire mitigation plan still need to be approved by the coordinator?
Yes.
County fire coordinator?
Yep. Usually, he works with the City of Rapid City, and he actually attends our dirt meetings frequently, so he is involved as well in the process.
Any other questions?
For the fire mitigation plan, you're still maxed out at 40 houses, irregardless.
Correct. So, if you want a variance, a lot of these is for, to take into consideration for the variances. So, at a minimum, even if you are over that 40 lots and you're in the fire protection district, you have to provide a mitigation plan as part of the variance process as well.
My last question would be, this exception, this, this section does not apply to subdivisions that result in no net gain in lot density on a dead-end road system, can you explain that just a little bit more?
So, if there's a lot like A and B, and they combine them into one lot, that would be a situation where they wouldn't have to. So, if they're on a dead-end road system and they're combining two lots, or they're combining three lots into two lots, if they're just reducing the density, then they wouldn't have to go through this.
That'd be, for an example, Idlewise Mountain, where a lot of that's been done.
Correct. So, if they combine them, then they would be.
We had one recently that had an undeveloped lot, and it didn't change the, I remember that one, and it did go through, because people asked why we were allowing it to be built.
Right. It's actually making the situ, anytime you reduce density in a situation like that, it's...
Yep. My last question, Mr. Chair, why is this so light today? Are you guys, are you guys staying busy upstairs?
Yes, and we have a lot of CUP reviews that we have to get through as well, so.
So, whoever's on next month is gonna take the load that I don't have to take. Okay.
I thought it was deliberately so Mr. Coleman could hold the record, he still has a meeting under 15 minutes. It is, no, no, we're almost at a half hour. He, his, his record, as far as I know, was good for 20 years, I've never seen a planning commission meeting that went less than 15 minutes, and Jim did it, standing in for the chair.
I'm sorry for bringing the.
See, you get all those little side stories. Any other questions from Brittany? On the ordinance amendment. Chair, address a motion.
Move to approve ordinance amendment, OA 24-09.
Been moved and seconded to approve per staff's recommendation, OA 24-09.
Who seconded that?
Jim.
Jim, okay.
I guess what would you say, proposed, the proposed text C with three items and an exception. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, item number 16 won't be necessary. County Board Report, item number 70.
So, the county board report, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the June 10th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Any questions? Any questions for Brittany? On to item number eighteen, no public? Items from the staff. Little report here. Go ahead.
Just a couple of things. We just wanna thank Kevin and Jim for serving on our planning commission. At least it was a uneventful last meeting for you. But we do appreciate you taking the time to do this. It's an important part of our process, so we appreciate you. Jerry will have something for you probably in the next quarter too.
Yeah.
So.
So Mr. Chair, Brittany, can you share with the commission here the new members and the member that's gonna continue on for another three years, so?
Correct. So, um, we did bring that recommendation in front of the Board of Commissioners at their last meeting. There were two candidates, Mr. John Santana and Lori Litsen. They both, Lori has been a previous planning commissioner, so she does have experience on the board. Mr. Santana is very active in the community and was excited to, to, you know, throw his hat in and be, sit on the planning commission. So he is going to take Kevin's remainder of his term and then Ms. Litsen's going to replace Mr. Coleman. They will be appointed at the next Board of Commissioner meeting, officially appointed. And then Kevin Keane has graciously accepted another term, so he's going to stay with us, so. Which is much appreciated. Just a little bit of background, Mr. Santana has a pretty strong background and he's done real estate, law enforcement. He's been active in the community. Lori is a retired engineer, so we have some good candidates and good.
Well, thank you.
Big shoes to fill, but I think they'll.
Chair's gonna weigh in here too. Kevin was gracious, as you know, Kevin was still due to stay on and his work commitment is such that that wasn't gonna be possible in the near future here. Maybe where it would have worked out for him on a long run. However, we've gotta thank him for that because it's not often we run into two excellent candidates. And that's the only two we had at, that we reviewed in the process. And then Lori had served before, was selected to replace Jim. Jim had served before, so. And the review also felt that having an engineer was a real plus for us up there. And I can't say enough, good Jim served twice, that's a, that's a lot of commitment through the years. And the only thing I didn't hear you say on Mr. Santana, he is, and still presently is, involved in a lot of community volunteer work that relates to charitable causes and, and he does a good job there. He's well-known. In fact, one that he kinda runs himself, doesn't he, that one?
I think so, and I don't remember.
It's a child, it's a children's one. So you're gonna enjoy them, they were excellent folks and, and I'm sure they'll be a real plus for the commission. Anything else for Brittany while we've got her up here?
I appreciate the time and the opportunity and, and not writing this off as my wish list for the future. I just have so much going on right now. Had to step down from this one. I also, we, I also belong to the building committee for Habitat for Humanity of the Black Hills. And we dissolved that, or we're reorganizing that organization just for that committee because of the time commitment for that as well, so. But really appreciated and enjoyed working with all of you. Like the viewpoints and all the knowledge I've gained here and, so. I will still be around, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
If I get to come. I, I do wanna express my sincere and profound appreciation for this opportunity because I, I came to this with, with no practical knowledge of land usage or construction or real estate or anything that dealt with land. It was a, it was a really kind of a hypothetical indulgence on my part. But I have been struck by how with each meeting, you see people who are so moved by their place and their land. And I never appreciated, I don't think, the emotional power of place. And sometimes you forget, in amongst all the regulation and ordinances necessary, but abstract in a way, how important that is. I've seen people come here who I disagreed with in terms of how they were going to use their property or what they had in mind for their neighbor's property. But there was a almost magical sort of element here that I don't think we can ever forget, that this is a little different than other exercises in government, I think. Because we are dealing with, with a particularly sensitive part of the American psyche. And it's, it's been a marvelous experience. The staff has been great. I've, I've worked with fabulous people. Sometimes people assume that local government is, you know, more happenstance than quality, and that's simply not true. I, I am amazed at the kind of effort that's gone in and goes into this process. So, anyway, and I appreciate the opportunity to a bit of part of it. So I wish you all the best of luck. And I hope I don't have to appear before you for a condition.
Anything else for Brittany? Thank you, Brittany.
Well, thank you again.
All right. Items from the membership, only two things, and you went through both of them. We'll be introducing the new members will be seated at the next meeting. The next meeting opens up with the planning department director running the meeting. It's my intent to nominate Karen for the chair. Mike has indicated he wanted to renew as vice chair. Everything else, anybody else wants, just, we need to get it to Brittany so she knows what's going on for that meeting. And then she turns it over to, I believe you do the chair first?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the chair fills the other positions. Anything else from the membership?
I just wanna thank Jim and Kevin for their service. So wish you the best going forward.
I think sometimes it's underestimated what, even as a commissioner, you go through in these planning commissions. We do see a lot of very, as Jim pointed out, committed people to their property and their, their thoughts on property. And they get angry with us. You don't get many phone calls extra, how wonderful it was to have talked to you at the meeting while you're eating supper, you know? So it's a, it's, it's a thankless one. The, the positive side, it's not as thankless, I don't think, as, as serving on the school board, so. That poor job has gotta be one of the toughest there is in the whole world for a volunteer type of person.
Uh, Ken Davis, who was a commissioner years back, he, he told me a story once. He said, you know, he said he got a phone call at two in the morning. Somebody wanting to know something about their property or something. So Ken said, he did the research and at two o'clock the next morning, he returned the phone.
Called him back.
So that's how that works.
Yeah. It, it gets exciting. I, I have a similar one. My wife picked up the phone one time and she just said, we just sat down to eat and he'll call you back when we're done eating. And I was, my wife never sticks, married best so easy, gone. And they must have said something that wasn't very funny. And she says, I can tell you one thing about my husband, he returns telephone calls. Thank you, goodbye. And that's just, so she got her own little, and our families sometime get, during that septic thing, our old families, you know? You can remember those and during the vacation somewhere else. So it's not always a, a happy position, but it, it is one you sure do a lot of jumping into with both feet.
I'd advise Kevin that, I think it was what, about a decade ago, Jim and I were both on and we've been back. So maybe within the next ten years, you'll be back again.
Well, hopefully within ten years, I'll be retired, so.
Then you can really come back.
Yeah. Then the only work commitment I'll have is based on my wife's wants.
Well, Mike made a statement this morning, and he was talking about, people don't expect to see seven old gee, grumpy old geezers sitting up here when they come in. It's a nice to have a nice spread of, of folks up here. And I think it's always been a good committee that way, the commission has. So I think the Board of Commissioners do a good job of selecting who they have done through the years, so. Enough said. Chair, address a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now adjourned.